Okay. All right, I would, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call our meeting to order of the Coventry School Committee. I have six o'clock. Could we have a roll call, please? Mrs. Martin?
Kathryn Patnood.
Here.
David Florio.
Yeah.
Luke Murray.
Here.
Donna Colonian.
Here.
James Pearson.
Here.
Craig Levis.
Here.
Don Cowart.
Don's not gonna be here tonight.
And Harold Sean.
Harold will be joining us after executive session.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Madam Chair, make a motion to executive session.
I second the motion.
All right, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Kathryn Patnood.
Yes.
David Florio.
Yes.
Luke Murray.
Yes.
Donna Colonian.
Yes.
James Pearson.
Yes.
Great, motion carries five to zero. Okay, we'll be back in the public after a very brief executive session. See you all in executive session. Bye.
Bye.
To start the meeting. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to reconvene the open session of the Coventry School Committee. I have six sixteen. And could we have a moment of silence to consider the work before us this evening? Thank you. Moving on to our mission statement, if Mr. Murray, you could do the honor of reading the mission statement for Coventry Public Schools, please.
The mission of the Coventry Public Schools is to inspire, support, and challenge all students in an inclusive community to be critical thinkers, effective communicators, reflective learners, responsible individuals, and global citizens.
Thank you. And just to notify the public, the school committee met in executive session very briefly before this meeting to approve the executive session minutes from five thirteen twenty twenty one. There was one vote taken, it was unanimous, and passed five to zero. So could we have a vote to seal the minutes of that executive session?
Madam Chair, make a motion to seal the minutes of the executive session on June ninth two thousand twenty one.
I second the motion.
Could we have a roll call vote, please, Mrs. Martin?
Kathryn Patnood.
Yes.
David Florio.
Yes.
Luke Murray.
Yes.
Donna Colonian.
Yes.
James Pearson.
Do we have a yes, James?
Can't hear you.
We can't hear you, James. You can just put your hand up. Okay, great. Thank you. Motion carries five to zero. Hopefully, you'll be able to fix that technical issue as we go forward. Next agenda item is the approval of the minutes from our open meetings. Mr. Florio, did you want a motion on this?
Madam Chair, make a motion to approve the minutes of April twenty seven two thousand twenty one, May twenty seven two thousand twenty one, as presented slash amended.
I second the motion.
Any questions or discussion from the committee? Hearing none. All in. Could we have a roll call vote, please, Mrs. Martin?
Kathryn Patnood.
Yes.
David Florio.
Yes.
Luke Murray.
Yes.
Donna Colonian.
Yes.
James Pearson.
Yes. My audio working?
Yes, thank you. Motion carries five to zero. Moving into the public agenda for the citizens gathered. Any of the agenda items from here on are open to public discussion and comment. If there is a motion for a vote before we actually call for the vote, we will ask the public for any comments, questions, or concerns. That being said, I think we can move on to, can we move on to six?
I think we're still waiting for, I know we're waiting for Will and a couple more of the coaches.
Okay.
So if you don't mind, we could.
Yeah, we'll come back.
So if you guys owe my whole time, just to give, because we did say seven, but.
No, I know.
We're trying to get on a little early, so.
All right, thank you. Okay, so I guess we can move on to the certified CTA personnel recall. It was our reference number six. Mr. Levis, did you want to start this?
Sure, I just wanted to say that when we did the layoffs, we based them on enrollment, and we did say we were gonna monitor enrollment. And we'll be doing that and throughout, obviously, throughout the rest of the year and the summer. But since our last school committee meeting, we've had to add back three kindergarten classes based on enrollment, one at Hopkins Hill, one at Western Coventry, and one at Washington Oak. We've also had to add a first grade, a second grade, and a fourth grade back to Black Rock. So that's classrooms we've had to add to enrollment. And we expect this to continue. You know, based on the pandemic and our numbers and what we would hope to see in our schools. So that's why we're gonna have six individuals recalled tonight.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, make a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent that the following personnel be recalled from layoff for the two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty two school year. Stacy DeMello, one point oh, grade four teacher, Washington Oak Elementary School, June nine two thousand twenty one, recalled to position. Lauren Sarah, one point oh, inclusion teacher, Ty Oak Elementary School, June nine two thousand twenty one, recalled to position. Caitlin Valetta, one point oh, intensive supervision, intensive support teacher, excuse me, Alan Sean Feinstein Middle School, June nine two thousand twenty one, recalled to position. Ashley Dudley, one point oh, intensive support score teacher, Black Rock Elementary School, June nine two thousand twenty one, recalled to position. Jennifer Reynolds, one point oh, intensive support strive teacher, Western Coventry Elementary School, six nine twenty one, recalled to position. Kelly Lama, one point oh, is that how you say it? L A M A, Elie Lama, one point oh, state pre-K teacher, Washington Oak, June nine two thousand twenty one, recalled to position.
I second the motion.
Any questions from the committee? Anything from the public? Seeing none. Could we have a roll call vote, please, Mrs. Martin?
Kathryn Patnood.
Yes.
David Florio.
Yes.
Luke Murray.
Yes.
Donna Colonian.
Yes.
James Pearson.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to agenda item number eight, which is the general, the school committee general powers and duties first reading policy. It was our reference two A and two B. Mr. Levis, did you want to start this? And then maybe Mr. Pearson? Not sure who wants to talk about this.
Basically, what we did with this policy, and you also have a copy of the old policy, is we just incorporated the changes in Title sixteen around the powers and duties of the school committee. So we just went in and reworked the policy, reorganized it a bit, but also just incorporated the new changes that are based on Title sixteen. So Mr. Pearson, I don't know if you want to add to that.
Yeah, I think that's a good summary. I think this policy, when the title changed, we didn't update this policy. So it's just making sure where our policy is currently aligned with the statute.
Okay, so this is a dispense of the first reading. So is there a motion?
Madam Chair, make a motion to dispense the first reading of the school committee general powers and duties, BBA policy.
I second the motion.
Any discussion from the committee on this? Any questions? Anything from the public? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please, Mrs. Martin?
Kathryn Patnood.
Yes.
David Florio.
Yes.
Luke Murray.
Yes.
Donna Colonian.
Yes.
James Pearson.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five to zero. Do we have everybody on board now, Mr. Levis?
We have all the captains. I believe Coach Goodheart was still waiting for two coaches. Do you know if they're gonna be joining us, or?
I'm not a hundred percent sure if they're gonna be joining. I reached out, but I didn't get anything back.
Would you be okay if we proceed right now, or do you want to wait a little bit longer? I'll defer to you, coach.
We can do whatever you want to do. We can wait a little bit longer. We can get going. That's up to you, sir.
Could we do one more policy, the first reading, and then we could come back to them? Is that okay?
Sure.
All right.
Okay, moving on to item, agenda item number nine, which is the certified and non-certified administrative salary and evaluation policy, CDA, CFB. It's our first reading. Are there any questions? Mr. Levis, would you like to speak to this?
Sure, and Mr. Pearson can also add to this. So this is, you see our old policy there. This was a revision to incorporate not just starting salaries for new administrators, but also to look at compensation. And Ms. Card, I just looked to see if she was in the audience, but I didn't see her. I don't see her. But she was very instrumental, our HR director. We had a first meeting, we had some discussion with the policy subcommittee, and Ms. Card spent several weeks doing some comparisons, coming back with a lot of data to the policy subcommittee. And two meetings later, we came up with this. So it incorporates not only a range that we feel is appropriate based on comparable comparative positions in our region, but also looked at compensation in terms of, you know, looking at, you know, we put into contracts that will look at salaries every year, but unfortunately, we don't. And this takes into consideration, look at the cost of living, looks at their performance, and also looks at the gap between our teachers, because if they continuously, when they collective bargaining, they get increases, it looks at that gap between our administrators. So we thought that that was very fair. It still has to be presented to the school committee for approval, but we think that's a fair way. Ms. Card and I are working on, we have a basic evaluation instrument. The, what we're doing is aligning it, though, to the job descriptions for each position. The principals have a job, have an evaluation instrument that the school committee has approved, and their ride is approved. But our central office administrators, we just, we do goal setting, so it'll incorporate a self-assessment, but also have some concrete measurements in terms of their job performance, because we also included if someone is highly effective, that they could receive a merit increase. And we talked about that merit increase doesn't necessarily mean something that would be a salary increase. It could be a merit increase, you know, on an annual basis, depending on their performance. But also, too, if somebody, if an administrator isn't satisfactory, they wouldn't get a raise. And I think that was important. You know, we want all of our, you know, we have incredible administrators. We work hard, they work hard, but we want to be supportive. So we felt this is a very thorough and comprehensive way to not only attract, but to retain our good administrators, our great administrators. So, and this is only the first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Levis. Mr. Pearson, did you have anything to add on this?
I think Mr. Levis covered most of it. I think from the school committee's perspective, it's important we set a positive direction for our administrators in that, you know, our expectations are you will be evaluated. And the evaluation is to identify growth opportunities, but also to identify areas they're excelling. As Mr. Levis said, this is, the end goal here is to retain good talent, but it's also to grow our talent. You know, even if we have someone who has some improvement areas, you know, we can identify those quickly on a regular basis. It's fair. It's what we should be doing for, for highly skilled employees and allow, giving them opportunity to grow and improve themselves. So I think setting that direction, you know, setting that compass and making sure that these evaluations are taking place on a regular basis, I think is very important from the school committee perspective.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Well said. Are we ready to move on dispensing of the first reading?
Madam Chair, I move to dispense the first reading of the certified and non-certified administrative salary and evaluation policy, CDA, CFB policy.
I second the motion.
Any further questions from the committee? Anything from the public? Seeing no hands raised, could we have a roll call vote, please, Mrs. Martin?
Kathryn Patnood.
Yes.
David Florio.
Yes.
Luke Murray.
Yes.
Donna Colonian.
Yes.
Yes.
James Pearson.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five to zero. Looks like we can go back to our agenda item to celebrate our football team. I think we're ready for that.
Sure. Sure. So I know this is long overdue. I just want to start off by obviously thanking the coaches. I wish we could have invited all of the team here, but I feel that, you know, and at some point, we need to celebrate with everybody, and hopefully that will be in the short future. Though I know many of the players are going off to university and to bigger and better things. But I do want to start off by thanking the coaches, Coach Gary Goodheart, for, you know, this was a very difficult year. We all know that, not only the pandemic, but then in Coventry, we were we were not in a position where we're gonna even have athletics or activities. And that was devastating for everybody. We were able to make that work. Coach Goodheart, you know, stepped up, not even knowing if we were gonna have football at the time, and, you know, filling, you know, the shoes of a, just in a difficult situation. And right off the bat, the, the students had, the players had indicated how supportive they were of Coach Goodheart. So I just want to thank him. I've thanked him many times, but I want to thank him just for doing the work that he's done and stepping up. And, you know, the feedback that we received from everybody is just an outstanding leader and an outstanding mentor. So I want to thank him from the bottom of our heart and appreciate all the work that he's done. So.
Well, I don't know how to turn it off.
All right, I know there's somebody on here that probably shouldn't be on here. I know somebody else has Mr. Carpennello's link there. But, Mr. Coach Goodheart, I'd like to turn it over to you to introduce your coaches, to introduce your team captains, and then, you know, any words you want to say. And then we'd like to have the opportunity for our school committee and our audience to, you know, say any words that they feel like they want to share with you. But again, congratulations to everybody. Something our community definitely needed.
Thank you again, Mr. Levis. It's greatly appreciated for all the kind words. This past season, we had five coaches. Right now, we just have two of us on right now. Coach Carpennello, Anthony Carpennello, he is extremely integral to everything that we do. He's probably one of the most supportive coaches I've ever been around. He does everything. He's Mr. Do-Everything. I don't think he gets enough recognition all the way around. He's, he's our unsung hero, to be honest with you. He does so much, and, you know, greatly appreciate everything he does. Another guy who isn't on right now, Coach Joe Letourneau, he's not here right now, but he did pretty much all the, all the dirty work you need a coach to do with a lot of the younger guys, making sure that they're staying busy and active, learning all kinds of football stuff, because sometimes that can get lost when you're trying to coach a varsity football team. Those young guys can kind of sit around or whatever. He did a great job with that. Coach Andrew Jervisini, he's not on right now. He's actually a teacher at the middle school. He jumped, he jumped in, you know, a couple weeks in, and, you know, he hit the ground running, did a good job as a lineman. Made some, some good strides, and, you know, we, our offense really, really worked really well, our offensive line. Really, offensive lines all in general doesn't get a lot of credit, because you've got quarterbacks and receivers and running backs. Their names go in the paper, but the offensive linemen, they don't really get the attention that they deserve. And Coach Jervisini did a good job with them. Coach Mike Sarasolo, he's not on right now. He did a great job with us, you know, helped out a lot with all the little things. And, you know, he was, he was kind of our team mascot, so to speak. The kids had a lot of, a lot of fun with Coach Sarasolo. Am I missing anybody? Is that all we had? That was all our coaches right there. We had five captains this year. All of them, you know, super important. Go from the young guys first, Jaden Carnaval, he was one of our, our starting running backs and also one of our starting linebackers. One of our two leading tacklers on the team with our other young guy, Nick Carpennello. Jaden was the MVP of the Super Bowl. I believe he had a hundred and seventy-eight yards rushing and a touchdown. They couldn't stop him, you know, they really just couldn't tackle our guys. They couldn't tackle Jaden. They couldn't tackle Nick. They couldn't tackle Logan Carson. Jaden had a great season all the way around. He, you know, he was our special teams leader in tackles in, in regular defensive series. He was leading us in tackles, doing a great job, doing all the dirty work. Another young guy, another captain, Nick Carpennello, just an absolute bulldozer. Offensively and defensively, had, you know, seven, I think, seven or eight rushing touchdowns. Mr. Do-It-Every, Do-It-All, led our team in pancakes, pancake blocks. If you guys aren't familiar, it's when you knock somebody down from a block. He was playing fullback and running back. So when you're doing that from those positions, that's, that's pretty incredible. Also, leading our team in tackles and, and blocking extra points. Getting sacks, you know, and it's a, at two hundred, you know, he's only like two seventeen right now, but he's playing around like probably two thirty. Just absolutely impossible to block him. All around great effort. Michael Pedruto, another, he's a senior, one of our, our starting linemen who rotated on the defensive line. Without him, we definitely don't win the Super Bowl. If you watch film, you see all the little, little fine details of his blocking that he does, really making a, a strong effort to pull under the hole and get, get guys out of the way. So our running backs can't, those big seven, eight, you know, yard chunks. Sometimes we get those thirties. We didn't really have too many big long break ways, except for the first game of the year. But Michael Pedruto did a great job playing guard for us. And actually, we had two, we have two guards right now on, Gavin Cooney's the other guard that played for us. And both of them, you know, they, they opened holes left and right every single game, pushed everybody forward when we needed those, that fullback dive on the one yard line. Just needed that quick, that quick punch in. Both guards did a great job. Gavin's also one of our starting defensive tackles. I think he finished fourth in the state in sacks, and he was our third-leading tackler, I believe. So when you're playing defensive tackle, and you're, you know, you're right up there to lead your team in tackles, that's pretty incredible. And he's actually going to college to play football at Bridgewater State. Very deserving, great kid. Great job on both sides of the ball. And then we have our quarterback, Will Turner, who's on as well. Arguably, the best quarterback in the whole state. You know, last year, he, you know, he threw for two thousand yards, twenty touchdowns, and ten interceptions. You know, led the team, you know, all around, just a great leader. This year, his stats weren't as, as great as they were last year, but I'm sure winning the state title is a lot more fun than, you know, throwing for two thousand and, you know, having, having one or two wins. He's still, his stats are pretty damn good. You know, he threw for seven or eight hundred yards, had thirteen touchdowns, minimal turnovers, literally just a field general, and, you know, is, is an absolute great game manager. And without Will Turner, we definitely, we don't know if we make it to playoffs. But, you know, all of our captains, you know, they're, they exemplify what you want leaders to be. And I think, you know, having, having guys like Coach Carpennello and Coach Letourneau and Coach Jervisini, guys like those, you know, they're, they're just all around really good guys and, you know, good leaders, they, you know, successful people, you know. When you are around successful people yourself, end up being successful. So I'm very fortunate to have those guys. And for us coming into the fall, we have two of those guys coming back, because two of them are already juniors, and Jaden and Nick. So we're very fortunate to have two, not only, you know, four, four point six, four point seven GPA captains coming back, you know, but just great football players, great kids. Matter of fact, I think, I'd like to see what the GPAs are for all high school football teams, because I guarantee that we are among the top five in the entire state for GPAs. We have eighteen kids that have four point oh or higher. So I don't know how many other schools do that, but that's incredible to me. I'm from the state of Maine, and I was fortunate to coach on a high school football team where we won three straight state titles. And we had maybe one kid with a four point oh. And being in Coventry and having, you know, eighteen to twenty kids having four point oh GPAs or higher is pretty incredible to me. Thank you for the recognition, you know, as, for us, this is huge. Coach Dunbar is no longer here, and, you know, he did a great job building the foundation for this football program. And, you know, I, I guess I kind of moved here at the right time and started coaching Coventry at the right time and kind of fell into a position at the right time. And, you know, I just inherited a really great group of kids and a great group of coaches.
You, I mean, to me, it's, there was a fork in the road, and it could have gone either way. And like I said, I remember talking to, I know Nick, and I believe Will, and just how much, and other, other players, and how much they respect you. And the only problem is, I wish Coach Carpennello had a little bit more emotion, you know. He's just so passive and, you know, but I guess you gotta, you take the, play with the cards you're dealt. I don't know if Coach Carpennello, the players would like to say something, and then we can, you know, if it's okay, Madam Chair, then the school committee and the audience can make comments. So I'd like to hear from everybody, if that's okay.
All right, well, I just want to thank everybody, Mr. Levis and everybody for having us. This really means a lot to us. It was a difficult year, and Coach Goodheart stepped up like no other. It was really, in twenty somewhat years of coaching, this was the most complete team in every sense. From like Coach Goodheart said, having more than half of our kids over a four point oh, to having kids sacrifice statistics for the good of the team. It was just, just incredible. I couldn't be more proud of these kids, because they really, it was, there was never the, there was never I. And as coaches, we always say there's no I in team, and these kids really, really bought into that. And they did whatever they needed to do. Every week, it might have been somebody different, and they didn't care. They just wanted to win. I, I can't tell you how many times I heard different kids say, Coach, oh, I don't care if I catch any touchdowns this week, as long as we win. I don't care if I, you know, throw for three hundred yards, as long as we win. I don't care if I run for a touchdown. So these kids really, really are a special, special group of kids. And it's gonna be very interesting to see what we could do next year. As you may have heard, they've already bumped us back up to Division Two, because I guess they consider us bullies now. So, but thank you very much for having us.
Thank you. How about, Mike, can we start with you?
Sure. Obviously, I didn't get to play like all the games this year. I only got to play four because of quarantine policies, but it's probably like the most fun year I've ever had, like in football in general. Coach Goodheart made a great, Coach Carp, I've actually been here with him since like Little League when I'm in Rams. And it was just all great, good and round.
Excellent. Well, we appreciate all your effort. How about Jaden?
Hey, everybody. I just want to say thank you for the recognition. It means a lot to us. It means a lot to the entire team. We put in a lot of work this year, and I couldn't have done it without anybody else. I just hope that the seniors going away, Gavin, Will, Mike, I hope you guys had a great season, and I hope you don't forget this.
Thanks, Jaden. How about Gavin? You're looking a little trim there.
Thank, thank you guys so much for the recognition tonight. It means a lot. I just wanted to say, the team that I've had this year, out of all twelve years of me playing football, I don't think I've been closer to any team that I've had. And I would run through a wall for any of these guys.
Thank you. How about Nick?
Yes, hi, everyone. Thank you to the school committee for giving us this opportunity.
And, uh, pretty much giving all, us all a shout out, so really we appreciate that more than you could imagine. So thank you and I just want to thank all the guys and players on the team, all those out there who are watching for believing in us and, uh, because we won. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Nick. And, uh, Will, how about you?
Yeah, I also want to thank you guys for having us. Uh, we do appreciate it a lot. Um, I think it's really good for the school that, um, we were so successful this year and I think, um, like we said, a good tradition going forward and I hope it just keeps going. Uh, I think we're set with Coach Goodheart and Coach Carpino and all the other coaches. So, um, yeah, I think we're all set for the future.
All right, well, we appreciate everything that you guys have done and Madam Chair, I don't know, I'm, I'm sure the committee has things they'd like to say and perhaps the public.
Absolutely, thank you. Um, so I guess we'll start with Mr. Florio.
Oh, okay, Madam Chair. Uh, Will Turner, sometimes when I see you, I think of, uh, Tom Brady. And I've seen you a couple of times this year from the sidelines. Uh, you guys were good, very good. And, uh, boy, I'm so proud, I, I really am, I'm, I'm proud of my town football players, I have to say that. You know, you're good. Uh, division two though, oh my God. Here we go. One big challenge after another. You can handle it, man. Have a great day. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I'm sure they're gonna have great lives together, great lives.
Thank you, Mr. Florio. Uh, Mr. Murray?
Uh, Coach Goodheart, Coach Carpino, um, thanks for your time and energy and efforts. Um, I was at the game, I actually sat with my, my cousin, my cousin's actually Jayden Pearson. And, uh, I actually have two cousins in the school right now in sports, Riley Marslake, who's um, graduating this year, so. I'm, uh, I'm extremely proud of you guys. I know, uh, it was just like six months ago, I feel like I was out in front of the administration building. And I seen a rally for the sports and hopefully that made you stronger. Give you a little introspective into the process that we go through. You probably haven't, hadn't really heard much about the school committee, so then maybe you had. Um, but I'm glad we were able to keep sports going. Um, keep Coventry proud. And you did make us proud. I think it really coalesced the school in a very tough year during COVID. Uh, you fought through it. Um, like you mentioned it, you know, you had to be out because of quarantine. I know it wasn't easy this year. Um, but you all dealt with it well and you're gonna learn a lot from it moving forward. It's gonna make you stronger in your future life. And you will never forget this, I promise, for the rest of your life. So, uh, congratulations, take that one with you. You will take it with you going forward forever. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Uh, Mrs. Colonian?
I just want to say congratulations to all of you. Um, it, it was a tough year with everything going on. Ev- every obstacle you faced, you moved on and you became champions. So I'm really proud of you. Thank you, coaches, for your time. It's much appreciated, I'm sure the whole team appreciated you. And take care and good luck to the graduates. I hope, uh, you do well in college. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Colonian. Uh, Mr. Pearson?
I just want to say congratulations, players and coaches, job, job well done. Um, having played high school football myself for, for three and a half years. Um, you, you know, these are memories you'll carry with you for the rest of your life. The team building, this foundation building. Uh, the, the words of the coaches, you know, remember what they said about, about, about you and your other players because it's, it's just a sign of re- of respect and, and they understand the work you put into it and they're, and they're so proud of you and, and always carry that with you and, and just remember back on it. Um, because it, uh, it'll help you for the rest of your life. So again, congratulations again, thank you.
Um, thank you, Mr. Pearson. Uh, Mr. Levis, um, uh, Mr. Letourno, are you, did you just come on board with us?
Yes, I did. How are you?
Uh, I'm very good. And so I'm gonna, before I give my final comments, I'd like you to be able to share some of your, um, reflections on the season if you'd like.
Uh, first of all, I'd like to say thank you for the recognition. We, it was a heck of a year. Uh, what a great bunch of kids that we had. It was a shortened season, I wish it was longer. But what a great season that we did have, obviously. Um, I'm proud of these kids. It was so fun. It was so fun, the smile, the tears that some of these kids produce at the end. So it's, I, I just live through these kids and see what they've been through. And, uh, the adversity of the season that we had and to finish on a higher note was astronomical. Thank you.
Thank you. So glad you were able to make it. Um, and my final thoughts are just that I, I want to thank the coaches and the whole team, all the players for just giving Coventry something exciting to, um, to be proud of. Um, obviously, um, all of you did an amazing job. Um, I, I can't look back at my high school days and say that I understood football. In fact, when I used to go to the football games when I was, you know, sixteen years old, I would say to my friends, why is that other team running off on the, uh, uh, now, why is that team running out there and who are they? Um, I was completely, completely, um, didn't understand football even a little bit. Um, my mother was not a football fan and I just never watched football until probably in my early forties, I started watching and, um, learned to love the game. Um, certainly not like all of you guys, probably know it a lot better than I do, but, um, it, it is a wonderful game and, um, it just builds a lot of camaraderie and like Mr. Pearson said and probably Mr. Murray, um, you'll never forget these days. These will be the most important, maybe some of the most important memories that you'll ever have, um, as you get older. So, um, I, I'm so glad you were able to come. We are honored to recognize you and we appreciate all the hard work and we're so incredibly proud of you and so happy that you won the Super Bowl. I mean, that's just something Coventry's not known for, so. Um, it was really a, a huge, wonderful accomplishment and we really are so grateful for all the work that went into doing this. And again, the graduating seniors, um, good luck next year. And for our remaining students, go team. I think you're, you've got a great start. And, um, hopefully we, we will have a full season. Um, and in spite of all of it, COVID and uh, even thinking that we might not be able to even offer sports, I'm so glad that we were able to ultimately because it certainly has made a difference in all of our lives. So again, thank you so much. Um, and when that being said, I'm gonna allow any of the attendees, um, to have any final, uh, comments or if they have any questions for you.
Are you gonna go out to the public, Madam Chair?
Yes, the attendees, yeah, I was just asking the public, yeah. Um, I don't see anybody with their hand up, but we'll give it a minute.
Nobody's raising their hands.
Yeah. Okay, well, I, I'm sure you all know that the Coventry community is extremely proud of you, so.
Madam Chair, actually, we have a hand that just went up.
Oh, yay. Okay, thank you.
Yes, if you could just state your name and address to the record and unmute your microphone.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi, this is Jessica Card from one twenty-nine Station Street. First, I'd like to say that I'm a teacher in the district, so I'm incredibly proud of all of you. Um, it's very, it's something that Coventry should be proud of and I feel like, uh, as a community, we are. And as a community member, I played high school softball, um, when I was younger. Now I'm thirty-five, but much like many people have already said, these are the memories that you're gonna carry with you for the rest of your life. Those wins I had on the high school softball field, I still talk about with my daughter to this day and remind her as she's entering her world of sports, how incredibly important it is to be a team and even the wins and the losses. So I just want to congratulate all of you and say thank you for sharing your story.
Thank you so much for those comments.
Looks like that's it.
All right. Oh, and again, I do want to, again, just one final thing, saying that academics was so important on this team. Um, my hat is off to all of you, all of you superstars that did both football and were incredible students as well. Just congratulations on the, on your academic achievements as well. It's just pretty amazing. Um, it just goes to prove, smart kids make smart decisions on the football field. So, um, that's probably one of the reasons why you're able to go forward and, and, and win the Super Bowl, so. Um, very grateful for all of your commitment. Um, that being said, if you all want to take off and enjoy the rest of your evening, um, we will let you go. Again, thank you so much for attending and being here for us. Um, I always say this, but we, when we celebrate our students, it's probably in our coaches and teachers. It's the best part of being a school committee member. Uh, this is what gives us joy. Um, so you're giving us a lot of joy tonight, so, and in, even in, in previous to this as well. So thanks again and we will see you later.
Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you again.
Have a great night.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night, all. Yep.
Have a good night.
All right, well, that was fun. Um, moving on to agenda item number ten, the school calendar policy. It's our second reading and our approval, a reference number five. Mr. Levis, did you want to make any comments about this? I know there were some additions.
Yes, um, there were two areas that I highlighted. Um, I remember, uh, Serenakis had brought up a couple of points last time. I actually brought this back to the policy subcommittee. Um, so one is we've made the correction, we've deleted the, uh, hundred and eighty-four days. Um, but the other one that I highlighted, we've kept on there. Um, Ms. Serenakis and I discussed this. I, I, and, and Mr. Pearson, I, this is just for considering this. This policy is about considerations, at least this section, when we're putting together the calendar. So it, it really doesn't have anything to do with the public itself. It's more guidance for those put in the calendar. It talks about who we, uh, must, you know, should consult with. So we felt that it, we can, that, you know, we can leave this on there. Because, uh, it, it's in reference to parent, uh, conferences. While in the contract, we did remove them and there's an agreement where the state pre-K mandates that we have to have them. So we felt that it's appropriate because it's not violated in the contract because it, it just says this is something we have to take into consideration. So having said that, I would, I would ask that we approve it with the amendments. Me.
Thank you, Mr. Levis. Um, Mr. Pearson, did you want to join, um, add anything to that discussion?
Nothing to add.
You're good. Okay. So is there a motion to dispense with the second reading of the school calendar policy, ICA?
Madam Chair, make a motion to dispense second reading to approve the school calendar policy ICA as presented slash amended.
I second the motion.
Um, any further discussion from the committee? Hearing none, uh, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Captain Patnune?
Yes.
David Florio?
Yes.
Luke Murray?
Yes.
Donna Colonian?
Yes.
James Pearson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to the approval of the school calendar policy ICA as presented, is there a motion to approve?
Madam Chair, make a motion to approve the school calendar policy ICA as presented slash amended.
I second the motion.
Any other questions or concerns from the committee? Anything from the citizens gathered? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please, Mrs. Martin?
Captain Patnune?
Yes.
David Florio?
Yes.
Luke Murray?
Yes.
Donna Colonian?
Yes.
James Pearson?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Motion carries five to zero. Uh, moving on to agenda item number eleven, which is the discussion of the all-day referendum on Thursday, June tenth. Um, Mr. Levis, did you want to start this?
I, I just put this on the agenda because I think it's important to remind everybody uh, that tomorrow is the all-day referendum. And, uh, the, the polls are open from seven AM to eight PM. And I believe, um, you know, the, the polling locations, I'm sure people can help me with this. I know we've sent out through email, uh, into our listserv, um, to all the different polling locations. I know it's St. Francis Church for District One. Um, District Two, I believe, is the Town Hall. Uh, District Three is
Club Jokes.
Club Jokes. District Five, uh, Four is
Senior Center.
Senior Center and District Five is the High School on Reservoir Road. So I just felt it's important, uh, you know, we've been working to get people, make people aware. I know the, the town council members, the town manager, I know, you know, the school committee members. Uh, you know, our, our teachers' union or other union members have been getting people to support the vote. So I just want to put in the agenda and, uh, an opportunity for the school committee members to, uh, have a say, you know, and, and, you know, say their, their, their last words. Because again, it starts tomorrow at seven AM. And, uh, I want to say Mr. Coward was at, um, I did talk to Mr. Anderson, I always talk to him about what I can and can't do. Um, and he said we can definitely ask people to vote. And Mr. Coward was at Washington Oak today. At the end of the day, I had a signs made, uh, you know, that says, uh, I think it said, please, uh, vote June tenth. And he was at the pickup and tomorrow morning I'll be at the drop-off of the middle school. Um, and again, Mr. Anderson said it's perfectly appropriate. I'm not telling people how to vote, but reminding them. So, uh, you know, we've, we've done a lot of work and, um, we're hoping that, you know, I want to thank the community members, some members had put, actually put ads in the paper, encouraging people to vote, to support the students and teachers. And, um, you know, I've seen many signs throughout the community. I want to thank all those members, uh, those community members, so. Uh, that's it. I, I just wanted to, to put on the agenda and, and again, remind people and anybody watching or listening, if you can remind your neighbors and ask for their support, you know, it's been one heck of a year. Our, our, our school employees, like everybody, have been through the wringer, but one thing is that they've been there every single day. And I think it's important, um, just to acknowledge that or to, to remind the public that. Again, I can't tell people how to vote, so I know how I would vote, but I can't tell people, so. I will, uh, end it there.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Levis. Um, I don't know if the committee would like to speak on this, uh, but I'll give you a chance. Mr. Florio, did you have any comments?
Sure, uh, to the people that are watching, that are from District Four, please vote for the budget. I know it's tough. I know, I know some of you are single parents. Uh, I understand what you're going through and if, if one partner doesn't have a job. I know it's difficult. I know you're having difficult times, I understand. But we also want your kids to have a good education. And this is how they get a good education. You know, we, we have, and if we want a good product, we have to pay for it at times. So, uh, please, vote for the budget tomorrow. I'd appreciate it. And as your school committee representative, I'm telling you what's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Florio. Um, Mr. Murray?
Uh, yeah, I just, uh, I, I more want to just recognize it's been a, it's been a long year, right? From the twenty-one budget to the twenty-two budget, we're now on a fourth budget in a very short amount of time, but I want to thank the new council. Um, they've been great to work with. I think the tone has changed significantly this year. I think we've worked together well. Nothing's perfect, but I think we've collaborated. We've realized that we all as a town need to work together and move the town forward. So I'm appreciative mostly for that. Um, hopefully people get out and vote, um, however they vote. Um, but I think this year above all, um, we've at least tried to come together and educate people and, and make the effort, all of us. Um, so we'll see what happens tomorrow, but, uh, I just wanted, I wanted just identify that we've all, all taken a new direction, I think. And that we're all collaborating and moving forward together and that's a positive change, so. And, uh, I'm supporting the budget. I hope you will as well.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Uh, Mrs. Col- Mrs. Colonian?
I'd like to agree with, um, Mr. Murray on the fact that, that the town council, it's been a breath of fresh air to have, you know, such camaraderie between them and us. I, I just, I think it really made a difference. And, um, and I just want to say that I've spoken to several people out there, several of my friends. I've asked them to, to support the budget. Some said they would, you know, some said they wouldn't, but, you know, just go out and vote. I'm gonna support the budget. I, I think it's a good budget. I think it's fair. You know, nobody wants their You know, nobody wants their taxes to go up. I certainly don't, you know, I'm, I'm looking at retirement soon, so. But, you know, it is what it is. And we need, we need this money. We do. We, we need this budget. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mrs. Colunian. Mr. Pearson.
I don't believe Mrs. Colunian is old enough to retire. Too young for that. People, yes, you know, the message is clear. Please go down and vote. The more votes, the better because it, it helps build a, an accurate representation of, of what the town wants. We all remember various financial town meetings in the past where, you know, 200 people decided the entire budget for, for the town. So let's, let's try to have a big turnout and, and hope it, it goes favorably, you know, for, for the school department. So that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. And I only, I would, I don't have very much different to say than what's already been said, except to agree as well that the town council and the school committee and the administrative leadership on both sides of the fence, both the town and the school department, worked closely together. We, we worked diligently together. We had some interesting conversations, but we all agreed at the end that what we were presenting and approving to go forward to the, for the all-day referendum was a budget that we could all stand behind, that it was reasonable and responsible, and we truly believe that. And we look forward to the referendum tomorrow. Again, like Mr. Pearson said, the more folks that go out and actually vote, really does make the decision-making for the whole town a lot better. The more people that vote, the more we have a good inkling as to who is supporting us. And I truly believe that the townspeople do want what's best for our public services, municipal, trash collection, good roads, all the things that the town is responsible for, as well as great schools. And in order for this to happen, you have to invest. And I think this is a moderate, a modest increase and investment well worth your tax dollars. And I, myself, I'm obviously going to support the budget and I'm happy that there seems to be a, a different flavor out there that a lot of people, I think, will go out to vote tomorrow. And I encourage you to support the budget. And thank you so much for being good citizens and doing your public duty, basically. It's what America's all about, exercising your right to vote. So unless someone has something else to say, I will put it out to the public. I don't know if there's anyone listening who would like to respond to this discussion. Please feel free to raise your hand and we'll bring you into the meeting.
No hands are up yet.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Murphy. Anybody changes their mind, we still have citizens' comments to go through, so you can always raise your hand at that point. So the next agenda item is the superintendent's report. So, Mr. Levis.
Sure. I just want to follow up. At the last meeting, we brought forward the sewer tie-in at Ty Ogan. There were a couple of great points brought up about the sewer lines being private. Do we need to go before the sewer subcommittee and, and approval? And so I want to thank Mr. Martin for going out and I shared documents with you, correspondence, emails. And also to answer the questions, it looks like in July of 2015, the town took control of the sewer lines. It had been approved, brought, and I know we had talked, I, I do remember some conversation about, you know, when something had transpired, there was engineering work done on the Ty Ogan. But we have documentation that it was approved by the sewer subcommission and subsequently there was a resolution by the town council approving the tie-in. So Mr. Sands is working with organization outside of, I mean, offered the master price agreement to help us develop an RFP. Mr. Anderson will be working with him on that. And then we'll go out, I'm going to share all of this documentation with Mr. Terrell from DEM so that he knows that we are pursuing this and that, you know, we'll keep him posted. And obviously, the school committee will have to approve any proposal. When we, you know, when we go out to bid, you'll have to propose, when we bring back the bids to you. So I hope that answers the questions that were brought forward last week. And we'll keep you posted. Like I said, we're hoping that Mr. Sands just had a conversation with one of the, the companies from the, the MPA. He's discussed this with Mr. Anderson. And hopefully, we'll, like I said, in the next few days, we'll have that RFP ready to go out. And I think that'll satisfy, obviously, we want to, to address anything that's health and safety. But I do believe this will, in my conversation with Mr. Terrell, this will satisfy their request, more than request of us, so. So I don't know if anybody has any questions or if that's, if, if we can, if not, the second part of my report is, and Mr. Murphy, I don't know if you can bring in Ms. Anzaloni to the panelist. I'd like to, I, I know I had shared this with the committee and we shared this with the district. But I do want to, to notify our, our community that we had an extensive interview process for the Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. We actually had three rounds. We had incredible candidates. We chose to interview six candidates. And I'm, I'm pleased and proud, and many of you have much more of a history than, than myself with, to, to introduce effective July 1st, our new Director of Curriculum Instruction Assessment, Ms. Amy Anzaloni. Amy, you know, again, I think she, my understanding is when she took over Western Coventry, she had incredible shoes to fill in terms of, I never had the pleasure of meeting her, but Miss Sullivan, what her was just a phenomenal educator and administrator leader. And, you know, when I talk to anybody from Western that's gone through and had Ms. Anzaloni, there's nothing but, you know, they throw out every superlative I think I've ever heard in my life. And, you know, her work ethic is second to none. Her, her love for this community, her, you know, for, for the students in this community is just, you know, it's such an exemplar. So I'm very proud to, you know, that she'll be working with all of our buildings. We know that she's going to give everything she has and she's a welcome, you know, addition to, to our, our central office administration, our leadership team. And so I want to say, you know, and again, thank you for, Amy, for doing this. I know and she can tell you, it was not an easy decision for her. You know, we talk about our educators and our people in this community, and I mean it, that from our custodians to the food service, to our bus drivers and monitors, to our teachers and administrators, they don't just like these kids and they love them. And we saw that through this pandemic. I saw that. And, you know, Amy wears her, her emotions on her sleeve a lot and she takes it personal when a family's struggling. And I, I know she's going to bring that commitment and that passion and that leadership to central office. So again, Amy, I want to congratulate you. Thank you. And I'll turn it over. I don't know if you want to say a few words, Amy, and then I'm sure the committee will have a few things to say and maybe a few people in the audience.
Thank you, Mr. Levis. So I, I'm proud to, first of all, live in Coventry and I'm honored to have held so many roles in Coventry schools. I have been a special ed teacher, a sixth grade teacher, a second and third grade teacher, a professional development coordinator and principal, and now the Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. And when Mr. Spear hired me back in the eighties, I'll never forget that he put his hand in front of me and he said, "Miss Hanson, you could go do great things in these schools." And I think this is the next step in my journey to go do great things. I will miss being a principal. I mostly miss seeing the staff and the families and the students at Western. I'm excited, though, really, to be a part of the central office team and specifically to be working on curriculum and instruction. I will work hard, I promise, every day to make a positive impact. And I want to thank the interview committees. I want to thank the support from central office, Mr. Levis, and from my faculty and staff and families to allow me to make this next step in my journey, to make a difference. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
Can I just add, I'm sorry, Ms. Badenow, I just wanted to say that because I think we started the process immediately to fill the principalship at Western Coventry. So Mr. Coward's going to be running, facilitating that, and we're going to make sure that we include many stakeholders in the process. We know, again, it was, I'm sure incredibly difficult for Ms. Anzaloni to step into Ms. Sullivan's position. But likewise, we understand that there's big shoes to fill and nobody's going to be like, like Ms. Anzaloni. But we're going to make sure that we do due diligence to get the, the best person in that position we can.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Levis. Thank you, Mrs. Anzaloni. So, Mr. Florio, comments?
Mrs. Anzaloni, congratulations. You work, I know you worked hard for that position. I know it. I've seen it since I've been a school committee member. You were probably one of the hottest working principals I've seen in the system. And there are a lot of hard workers, Ms. Anzaloni, and you, you advocate, you advocated for your kids. You advocated for your teachers and most of all, you always advocated for your school. And you've done a good job of working with others. And I think you're going to, I think you're going to be wonderful. I think, Mr. Levis, the committee made a fine choice.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Florio. Mr. Murray.
So Mrs. A is awesome. And I'm extremely, the interview committee made it a very good choice. And, you know, obviously, being in District One, my children went to Western, got to know Mrs. A very well. Saw how hard she worked. Things like commitment, integrity, honesty, all come to mind. She works tirelessly on behalf of the children. She's been exemplary at everything she does. As a school committee member, she's always been honest with me, never holding back, telling me, you know, what her issues, what her hurdles are at the school. And the curriculum coordinator for me is, you know, personally, I think it's a key role. I think it's going to be the foundation, continue to be the foundation of how we build a better district. And so I am extremely happy of this choice. Although I'm rather sad for District One of losing her as a principal. I know we'll get another superstar to fill her shoes. Maybe not quite the same, but I know that she will do great things in this position and the district is going to be much, much better for it. And this is a natural progression in your career, right, Mrs. A? You've stuck with us through thick and thin. I know it was difficult at times. I know your career hasn't always been perfect, you know, here in the district. It's been, it's had its challenges. But the fact that you, you stuck here and you've really worked through the system from, from, you know, being a teacher to an administrator says a lot. So, and she's also a great contributor to my building committee. So, and I hope you won't give up that role because I need you. So with that, you know, what, what else can I say? You know, I'm so glad we're not losing you to another district. We kept you here. That was wise. We're going to hang on to you and I expect you to do great things with that curriculum there and look forward to what you bring to the table. So, congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Murray.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Mr., oh, Mrs. Colunian.
Mrs. Anzaloni, I, I remember you from Blackrock School. It's a long time ago. I, although neither one of my children had you as a teacher, I do remember you and everyone always thought so highly of you. And just from the work I've seen from you, I think you are going to be amazing at the, at this job. I just think you're going to do wonderful and we are so, I'm so proud to have you as part of the administration here in Coventry. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Colunian. Mr. Pearson.
Congratulations. And if you think you're off the hook with the policy subcommittee meetings, you're not because who knows, we may have some curriculum policies come before us at some point. No, but congratulations. Looking forward to seeing the good work you produce. Thank you.
Thank you.
And finally, Mrs. Anzaloni, I, I can't say more except congratulations. I'm so pleased that the interview committee chose you. My, my introduction to you came about from Jan Sullivan, who talked to me often about how just incredible you are as a leader, as a teacher, as an advocate for the school system. And I know that when you were selected to, to go to Western, she couldn't have been happier, prouder. It was just this joyous moment for her. And, and I remember her being so happy and pleased that you were going to take her place. And I'm, I'm a Western parent from way back. My daughter went to Western. It's a very special community and you made it as special as it always was. You know, as well as I do, I, I, I would go to the productions every, every year because I just loved going back to that school and seeing the drama, the drama club put on their productions and see how enthusiastic you were and so proud of your students. So I do believe that this job is critical to the district. And I know that you will work so hard to make sure that the vision that, you know, we have for curriculum and the future of our kids and achievement in our district, you're going to work at that and make sure that it happens. So again, I'm just so happy and pleased for you and I know that Jan would be so pleased and is pleased if she is looking down. So I just, again, want to say congratulations. I know it might be a little bittersweet to leave Covent, Western, but I think we're all, we're all really pleased and going to root for you. And I know you'll do an incredible job. So congratulations. And we're so happy that you're, you're coming to central office. That being said, let's see if there's any attendees that would like to congratulate you. We don't have a lot of people on tonight because it's an off-meeting, you know, on a Wednesday instead of a Thursday. So that might be part of the reason.
Plus, we met Monday and Tuesday, Madam Chair.
Well, that too, but it is an off-meeting on a Wednesday, so. I think we only have 13 attendees.
Look like we have any hands.
Yep. Well, it doesn't mean you're not supported, Amy. So again, we want to thank you again for coming and so glad you could be here. And good luck with your new position.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate all your kind words and support. Really do.
You're welcome.
We have, we have a late hand.
Oh, we do. Yay. Okay.
Okay, Paula, you're up. If you could just state your name and address to the record and unmute your microphone.
My name is Paula Jackard, 175 MacArthur Boulevard. I couldn't let you go, Amy, without congratulating you. You know, I am very proud of you. You know that as an elementary principal colleague, I will certainly miss you as a building administrator, but I know that you will do wonderful things to lead our district in the curriculum and I look forward to continuing to work with you in this new role.
Thanks, Paula.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mrs. Jackard. All right, we'll give it another second, just in case anybody else would like to comment.
My husband said he'll comment. He's in the other room.
You can, you can ask him to come on over. I'm sure he's extremely proud of you. Anyway, all right, it looks Anyway, all right, it looks like we can move on to citizens' comments. So are there any comments from the citizens gathered?
Doesn't look like there's any.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. All right, and I think we're ready to schedule our next meeting, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I make motion that the next virtual meeting of the school committee be scheduled for Thursday, June 24th, 2021 at 6:00 p.m.
I second the motion.
Thank you, could we have a roll call, please?
Catherine Patnune.
Yes.
David Florio.
Yes.
Luke Murray.
Yes.
Donna Colunian.
Yes.
James Pearson.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries five to zero. And is there a motion to adjourn? I have 7:25.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that the meeting be adjourned at 7:25 p.m.
I second the motion.
Thank you. And we can just raise our hands if we're all good with that? Looks like we have a five to zero vote on that. So I'd like to say good night, everyone, thank you all for attending and go out and vote, don't forget. Thank you.
We will vote, yeah. Bye-bye.
Bye.